I believe it is about time. All right, well, tonight I will call us to order for our February twenty fifteen. Excuse me, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting. And we'll begin tonight with an indication by Councilor Lowery. And I will then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you will, please stand.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you so much for this very, very beautiful day. Our city has been so fortunate. We are grateful for all the blessings received from you, allowing us to thrive during the sickness and to remain a united community. We pray that you will continue to look upon Lawrence with favor and help us move forward as a city. We ask your blessings upon our nation, and we ask for healing from sickness. We ask for patience and mercy as we interact with people who might not think like we do. Thank you for this time where we can come together as leaders to work for the good of our city. Be with us as we make decisions and guide us as we represent the people of Lawrence. We ask these things in the manner of your son.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to signify the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and endless.
Please proceed. Thank you, good sir. Tonight, we have three individuals who have signed up for public comment. The first would be Ms. Megan Craig. Ms. Craig actually signed up to address the council prior to tonight, so Ms. Craig, I believe you have got five minutes. All of those speakers, I'd ask for you to limit your comments to three minutes. Ms. Craig.
Hello. I am coming here tonight to discuss my property. I live at one ten East Hampton Street, which is like a block up from here. I've been living there since two thousand nine. And for the last seven to eight years, I've been asking about some land that's directly behind my house, which flows from my lot over. My house sits on a very small lot. The land that I'm requesting, I'm willing to purchase it. I've been using it since we've been there. I've been taking care of it. We cut the grass. We even have seeded the grass. The city do a good job putting, but I don't think they ever knew it wasn't mine. Just because we always cut, we cut all the way down. I haven't had it surveyed because I didn't know that I had to come and come see it. All these years, I didn't know what I was supposed to be doing. I found out last year that I had to come up here and ask for permission. So I haven't had it surveyed, so I don't know like the acre. But I pulled it up on the map. I could pass the map around for each one of you guys to see my lot. This is my lot right here. This is my house. This is my living room. How many areas do I have? You know, the four feet, the six feet, and one on the side. I want to even it out, which I've had a hundred fifty acres. Even it out. That's mine. I did look, because I know when we moved there, they had plans for that field. The field is owned by the city. They had plans for which other house is supposed to come and be built. And that was back in oh-nine, but they couldn't get no one approved. The lot that will, that I'm using cuts into lot number six. I'm asking for a portion of six. If I can't get a portion, I'm willing to see how much I would sell me lot six for. So, which I consider, because my lot is very small. And I want to even it out with the lot next to my lot, which would be one twelve with six to the left if you're looking at the thing. And just pulling it up on the thing, it was like zero point six. When I pulled it up trying to do it off the computer, it was zero point six. And the whole lot number six is like thirteen.
Thank you, Ms. Craig. I appreciate it. And just as a procedural note, because there's no item on the agenda or matter for the council to vote on. It wouldn't be procedurally appropriate for us to debate that at this time, but I appreciate your approach and counsel in expressing your wishes.
Mayor, may I make a comment as her council member?
Not right this time. All right. Moving on, we have this Tanya Nance. Next person who's going to address council. Ms. Nance. Like Ms. Nance said, and we have Mr. Whitmer. Mr. Whitmer.
Good afternoon or good evening. First, I just want to thank the City Council again for the support of Bridging the Gap and their endeavors of trying to impact the community. It seemed like someone is going to do a presentation of beautifying communities in Lawrence. And it's kind of like, I'm piggybacking on that end. We're getting ready to start up our yards of the month again. And it really went over pretty good last year. And we're encouraging a lot of people to stay involved. This time, we're going to expand it a little bit beyond the city limits. Because a lot of people in the county say, what about us? So, we're going to put together some qualification. And we're going to try to get it out to the public of some of the things that we're going to look for in judging the yards. Again, it's not the size of the house, how much it costs. It's just what you're doing around your house for your yard and your community. So, again, I want to thank you all for supporting this initiative. Hopefully, it's on the piggyback of what they're getting ready to do a presentation on. But it all is just keeping Lawrence beautiful, and I believe in Lawrence. And Lawrence is going to become the talk of the state, at least the state. And the buzz is out there, so just wanted to, again, thank you all for y'all's support.
Thank you, Ms. Whitmer. I appreciate this comment. All right, that is the extent of our public hearing participants. This time, we have members of council who have asked to recognize several individuals for their accomplishments in honor of Black History Month. It is our honor to recognize and celebrate Black History Month in City of Lawrence. And at least my firm belief that we should do our part as a city and make sure we make sure every aspect, every community, every member of our community is made to feel welcomed and appreciated for the things that they contribute to our community. So, I appreciate it, members of City Council, doing these recognitions. I suppose we have several folks wanting to do that, so I would suggest maybe we move in order of seniority and begin with Ms. Miller. And by that, I mean time on council. I wouldn't presume to make a statement about your age.
Thank you, Mayor, and believe you say everyone. Last year, a year before, last year, a year before last, we began to recognize individuals that have made a difference in our community. Not just Black History Month, but this is the month that we set aside. We are going to continue on when a citizen, someone makes a difference in the neighborhood. Just as Mr. Whitmer said. And tonight, the individual that I'm going to present an award to is Ms. Yvonne Butler. Someone who has, is a trailblazer in the community, not just Green Street, Jersey Street. She's been in for years, City of Lawrence, and she used to be on the radio. She have done, gone way beyond the call of duty to make a difference in the community. She's the one that doesn't like accolades and doesn't, when I called her and asked her, she said, oh, no, not me. I don't observe that. But sometime, people does things that go unnoticed. And since we have been having this housing project, Ms. Butler is in the background assisting people in filling out those applications. And she told me this morning some more things that she's doing. So at this time, I would like to call Ms. Butler frankly, and the plaque read, "In Honor of Black History Month, Mayor Nathan Sand and Lawrence City Council Recognizes Yvonne Butler for Community Service." February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you for all you do.
Well, can I say something?
Please.
As we give honor to our God that allows us to do all the things that we do, we're so thankful and we're grateful that he's given us the mindset to want to help others. And that's what God is, his love. So anytime I can be of help, if you see me in the grocery store, just say, hey, can you help me out? If I don't know somebody, if I don't know it, I know people. And all I don't know, I hope that they do know. Thank you so much again.
Good evening, everybody. And this is another blessing that we want to bless someone with. And this lady, Ms. Rosalyn Johnson, is she? She's not here tonight. Anyway, we're going to present this to her as well. She does work also. She has me in our both running myself. And she really do a good job. And I would like to recognize her tonight. That's Rosalyn Johnson. In honor of Black History Month, Mayor Nathan Sand and City of Council recognize Rosalyn Johnson for Community Service, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And is anyone here to accept this for her? If not, I will see that she gets it. And this is her. Good afternoon. I didn't get the memo, but I got some gifts in place of the plaques. Black History Month is very important. It is, it is not setting aside one set of race. It is also, it's basically a empowerment. And it is talking about contributions that has been given. And specifically, we started this a couple of years ago for recognizing local black history to educate the youth and educate the community. Because like myself, I didn't even realize we had something called Rich Hill until I became a council member. And once I learned that, it became my duty to advocate about the importance of District Two and the history, the rich history that we have. Possum Hollow, the Rich Hill Development that was developed after the Civil War. And then also about Hunter's Court, the Hunter's Court community, which where I live, that was, it was originally developed. And at that time, it was predominantly a area of our Caucasian sister and brothers. And then it was a victim of what we call white flight. And it became a predominantly African-American neighborhood. We are people that believe in sticking together. We love one another and we support one another. As leaders in the community, sometimes being straightforward and focusing on things, we kind of, we'll lose sight about, sometimes we hurt people. And we don't know it because you're so focused and driven. You want to make sure that imbalances are not there anymore. That's the goal. So in doing that, as, I'm not the youngest mayor, seeing as the youngest. So in doing that, I dived in headfirst as a council member. And my goal was to help the community. It was to help seniors or whatever imbalances that we had in District Two. It was never to hurt anybody. So, what I'm saying in front of everybody today, if that's how it was received, I'm asking for forgiveness. Because we need to be unified and focus on the goal on the outside of this chamber, which is building the community, all races. The African-American community for some times has been left out. And it's sad to say that. It was developed out of hate and greed. Nothing to do with race. It's just a facade, a physical facade. If you look at babies, they don't look at race. They just want to play. And as adults, some of us have gravitated to that, and we have to shake it off. So today, I have two plaques. And what I want to do is turn it back to some of the people that has worked hard. And they, they work to better the community. And the first, I didn't have a plaque, but it's all right because we're trying to reunite. But this flower is for Mayor Sand. You're not an African-American. It's, and that's, it's not about African-Americans. It's about the contribution you made. You're the first mayor that we've had, that I know of. So Ms. Judy, if I'm wrong, you correct me. To be out front with empowerment of the segregated time that we had for what we call Backstreet. The park is beautiful. I see so many people utilizing it. I was upset when it, when you pushed forward with it because it wasn't the vision that I had, but I can be proud. And so it turned out beautiful. And it's a start, and it's commemorating the businesses that was back there. And I know Mayor Brownlee is one of the mayors that she, I think it was Gwen Kiner, she hired as someone the first. And again, I apologize because I'm not the youngest. I'm learning about all this stuff, and it's a lot of stuff. I can't say the first. And I learned that as I went. But she's, it's a lot of other mayors that done a lot of great things to empower other nationalities, let's put it that way. But Mayor Sand, I would like to give this to you for your hard work and that beautiful park. And put note with me. And I hope you accept it. The next one is I joined White Plain Baptist Church. I think I was eighteen. Ms. Miller? But Ms. Miller went to school with my father. My father went to college, I think, right? And she was the only one I used to see that was with trustees and, you know, the only female. And I would say, who's that lady? What is she doing? But my point I'm trying to make is that if I never seen that it was possible for me to become a council member, then I don't think I would have never been one. So, and history tells me that you were the first female, right? Is that right? For Lawrence City Council. So, I don't understand how you go. We, we are totally different. But seeing that it was possible is all I needed, right? So I want to give this to you for your hard work. And I'm going to ask Ms. Leslie, I think Leslie the one that ordered the plaques maybe, Judy, to go back and order one for you and Mayor Sand because you deserve it. And those are my two Black History people.
Thank you, Councilor Sullivan. Moving on to, I'll make a couple more comments when it comes time for my report, if I may, but I'll reserve that. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have Counselor, excuse me, Mr. Eric, if you don't mind if I put this way. Mr. Eric from Main Street to present some awards for Main Street Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's an exciting time to be here to give out some more awards and some more presentations. So, Main Street Lawrence, if you remember, this past year, we were excited to win several awards at the state level. And this year, we've submitted about four or five more, along with some that the cities sent in as well. So this evening, I wanted to recognize a few of these folks locally from Main Street Lawrence and from our Board of Directors. So our first one is our Master Merchant Award for twenty twenty-one and, or twenty twenty-two, which represents the year of twenty twenty-one. Our Master Merchant for this year is going to be Christie Finley with Southern Twist and Southern Trade Outfitters. The Master Merchant is a person who has been innovative, had a dedication to downtown, and a strong entrepreneurial spirit. And I think that is certainly evident in the fact that she's opened, she opened in downtown, I believe in twenty nineteen, and quickly grown to where she's opened a second location this past year. Also has increased her volume of business with the new store and a strong merchandising and commitment to downtown revitalization. So we appreciate all of her hard work. She also serves on our Promotion Committee for Main Street Lawrence, helping with all the events and other things that we do. So Christie, if you would, come up and accept your award from Main Street. The twenty twenty-two Master Merchant. Our next one is, again, somebody that has been a longtime business owner or property owner. Somebody that I think everybody realizes his dedication to downtown as well. And this year, we are awarding locally, a local rehab award to Wayne Owens, the owner of The Arbor. Again, he has taken a preservation effort for his building with the work that he did in twenty twenty-one on The Arbor. Facade improvements included new paint, new awning, new windows, removing some stucco, along with some fellow property owners there. And then to make that safe, but then also increased his interior upgrades, all while working within a budget constraint that we all know can happen because of the price of building materials and that sort of thing. So Wayne has been a longtime downtown business. He actually started over on Port Street, working there, and then moved up onto the square and then was able to purchase that building. And now is the property owner as well. So Main Street is excited to recognize Wayne Owens for our twenty twenty-two Rehab Award for his work that he's done at the property. And I have a couple more too that I'm going to recognize. These folks are, again, no stranger to Main Street or to the city. But it's our Downtown Service Award. This is going this year to the Holmes family, Barrett and Barton and Beth. Barrett and Beth were going to be here, but they had a meeting in Greenville at three o'clock today that just ended. So I will get with them tomorrow to hand them their award. But there, this is the Outstanding Service Award for Downtown Lawrence. This reflects an attitude of perseverance and dedication to our community and to community revitalization. I think everybody's familiar with what they've done next door with the Midtown Building. And then once they completed that project and they were awarded the Gaines-Johns Rehabilitation Award at the state level, they also have now purchased the Swalford Building just past, or two doors down past Roma, and are in the process of renovating and rehabbing that, which will be the home of our new steakhouse coming up sometime this year. So we're excited about that. We appreciate their investment in the community. Their work has, in both locations, has used mostly all local contractors, so we are appreciative of that. Growing and, and growing and increasing jobs here locally, but also helping to grow the entrepreneurial ecosystem here in Lawrence by working with property owners, new business owners, to make sure that they have the tools they need to be successful, both with the Coffee Roost and then with the Taylor that'll be opening again this year. So I'm excited to be able to present them, this award, the Downtown Service Award, to the Holmes family for all that they've done in Downtown Lawrence. So we appreciate them. And so all of these awards, and one more that I'll mention, have been presented to the state, Main Street, South Carolina, as part of the Municipal Association. We will be notified in March if we have won any of these at the state level. And we are excited and anticipation, in anticipation of that announcement. The other one that Main Street submitted, and I just want to recognize you guys because this is, was a partnership event with the City of Lawrence and Main Street, the city taking the lead, but was the Lawrence Lights the Night event in twenty twenty-one for July third. This will be submitted for the Outstanding Promotion Event for twenty twenty-one, which recognizes creative and effective image campaigns and special events that market to and attract people to Downtown Lawrence. And I think that that event obviously is a huge, clear, huge nomination for that because we welcomed about three thousand people in downtown. I think that's probably the largest one-day event that we've ever had in downtown in my lifetime that I can remember anyway. And certainly, all of the businesses benefited, the city benefited, and it was a partnership with everybody. Again, the city taking the lead on that, but being able to increase the sales and help our entrepreneurs that are around the square. Again, we appreciate that. So they will also be sent, have also been sent to the state for the Outstanding Promotion Awards. So again, I want to thank everybody. I want to thank those that you guys recognized earlier as well for all their improvements and commitments to our community as well. Thank you. By the way, too, we're going to slip out because these two are small business owners. One didn't get off until eight o'clock last night, and he's got work to do. So we're going to slip out, but thank you very much.
It was such a pleasure. I should have said this about two seconds earlier. But I think Christie's store opening over here was the second ribbon cutting I attended as mayor. And quick as you know it, she had outrun that store and moved to a new location. And now opened a second storefront for, just, just for men. So what an amazing story that is, and Wayne Owens as well, just the transformation of that building is incredible. Uh, so what an amazing story that is and, and Wayne Owens as well, just the transformation of that building is incredible. Appreciate their hard work. Alrighty, um. Moving on, uh, to the next item on the agenda, um, Mr. Hudson is not here with us tonight. But, uh, Jeremy Hudson, who has served as our Building and Zoning, um, Department Head, has announced his retirement. He is retiring after twenty-nine years of service with the City of Lawrence. He served for many, many years in the Fire Department. Um, and then, uh, after the retirement, Mr. Clay Riker, we, we were looking for a new Building and Zoning Administrator and, um. Jeremy applied for the job and really stepped up to the plate in, in taking. Us from a situation where really there, there wasn't a lot of enforcement that had been happening, just to put it blunt. We, we had gone decades without doing things as well as we should have. And at a difficult time, uh, stepped up to the plate to help us, um. Clean up the city and, uh, I think that is worthy of recognition and twenty-nine years of service to the city is worthy of recognition, so. Uh, he's not with us tonight, but I encourage you all to give him a pat on the back when you see him. Alright, um, that concludes our, uh, recognitions and commendations section on the agenda. That takes us to Reports and Communications. First up with that would be, um, Ms. Courtney Stonehill of. Our Keep Lawrence County Beautiful campaign. With the chamber. Tell us about Earth Day and Arbor Day first.
Um, I'm gonna take the time to thank Mayor Sin and Counsel for allowing me a few minutes tonight to present this to you. Um, while I'm introducing myself, I'm gonna pass these out if y'all allow me to. I'm Courtney Stonehill. I am the new Keep Lawrence County Beautiful Affiliate Coordinator. Um, it's a lot easier if it's in your, that's a whole mouthful, so you can beautify Lawrence County. I want to start off by saying thank y'all for the support in the Lawrence County Beautification Initiative. We are very close to becoming an official Keep America Beautiful Affiliate and great things are happening. Great things have been happening over the past few months and I'm very excited to be part of this success. I have given each of you a newsletter with details about progress and upcoming events, including my contact information. So feel free to reach out with me with any questions, comments, or ideas that y'all may have. I am here this evening to ask for your help and participation. I have provided a flyer with some details. Um, we are planning to do a huge countywide cleanup. On Friday, April twenty-second, which is Earth Day. Um, some of the things that I'm gonna need your help with are, I would need everyone to either serve as a site leader for your district. Or assign someone for me to work with in, in that place. Um, help identify a good starting place for the supplies to be handed out within your district. Or at least some guidance of, of where y'all would like that to be. And to help me with communication, we need to spread the word and get all of our residents involved in this. And then at the end of the community cleanup, we want to end it with doing a Arbor Day celebration by planting a tree within one of the city parks. The location is to be determined, but that is, that's our, our plan for ending our big countywide cleanup. Um, I will be following up with each of you in the next couple of weeks, once I have the site leaders in place. And then we can communicate more of the details after we get all of our site leaders. So thank y'all for y'all's time.
Thank you. Alrighty, uh, next we have, following up in a similar vein, um, a report from, um. Brandon Roberts, also Buildings and Apartment regarding spring beautification.
Thank you, Mayor Sin, Council members, Ms. Madison, Mr. Gata, Delgata. Got me nervous for a second there. In conjunction with what the Commerce and the County is doing, City of Lawrence is doing something very similar with some of the ordinances that we have in place. And we have a presentation for you. Before we get into that, I have the pleasure of introducing to you, Ms. Madison Workman. She is a Clemson grad student. She's, uh, pursuing a master's in public administration. Uh, she came to us as an intern to help with some projects and things for the city administrator. And till we found out that she has a background in zoning and planning, so obviously. She's been helping me for, with a lot of things, so again, it's my pleasure to introduce to you, Madison Work.
Good evening, Counsel, Mr. Mayor, Eric Lasik, hello. Um, yes, like, like Brandon said, I'm gonna. I'm giving the beginning half of our presentation to piggy off some of the city's cleanup initiatives beyond just the. Uh, our section of the county's cleanup.
Ms. Workman, can you, uh, get a bit closer to the mic there?
Yes, I've been told I'm quite loud, so I'm trying to yell. Um, some dates to be aware of, like Courtney, uh, said a few minutes ago. Uh, April twenty-second, again, is that cleanup day, uh, ending with the tree planting. And then we are, um, going to have an amnesty period for certain aspects of code enforcement. That will end on June first, uh, which we will talk about a little bit later. And then we will be having some, uh, demolition projects going on later this year with dates to be determined. Um, so one of the big things that we would like to, um, do as part of the cleanup day. Is engage with the community about different surveys for, um. Data that will help us on other projects. Um, one such project is the broadband survey project, which is currently being done by, uh, Lawrence CPW. Um, to gather data about, um, internet and fiber, um, connection, to really give us the data on, to understand how. Uh, unserved we are and to hopefully get grant money to. Allow for more, uh, digital inclusion and, um, subsidized payments. So they have already sent out this survey at this time, but if they don't have enough recipients or we haven't received, um, things back. We might engage with the community since we have a lot of volunteers planning to attend to really, you know, engage with the community and ask these questions to get feedback on. Um, our underserved areas. Uh, this will also be a similar process for the surveys for the community development grants. Um, those will be more questions about low to moderate income and different areas in the community that could use, um. Some special projects. Um, this is a federal program and so a lot of different qualifications have to be met, one of which is, um. Proving that the area is fifty-one percent or more low to moderate income and specific types of, um. Project objectives, so there's a variety of projects that could qualify for this grant program. But the main point is proving that we can meet the need, that there is a need that we need to meet with these projects, whether that be. We need to revitalize the neighborhood, connect it to downtown, any type of, um, new equipment for our, on our side as the city to help provide services further. This data from this survey would establish, hey, we need this money for this reason, here's our project idea. And then subsequently they'd be like, oh, that's such a great idea, let's give them money, you know, so stuff like that. One of the biggest, um, enforcements that we want to, um, as a city, as a code enforcement and a zoning. We really want to make sure that our efforts on cleanup day don't go to waste. And as such, we want to, um, make sure that the community is aware that these are the guidelines that are currently in place. Um, we have three main residential property ordinances, property to clean, weeds and grass, and abandoned or derelict motor vehicles. The first one is how to keep your property clean. Um, all property owners and tenants are responsible for maintaining the exterior, um, of their home, of their residence, whether that be owning or renting. Um, so basically this is an example of what we don't want. We don't want to see these things just laying in their yard, you know? So as such, as code enforcement side, which Brandon will get into later, we really want to be cracking down and making sure that people are aware that this, this can't be a consistent thing on their property, you know? Same thing with weeds and grass. I mean, you know, in, in the summertime, it rains, that grass wraps up. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about legitimate neglect of the yards to where this becomes a, a hazard or. You know, creatures encouraging of bad things in our communities. So this is the type of thing that we're looking at with that ordinance as well. And then same with the abandoned or derelict vehicles. All property owners and tenants are responsible for protecting unlicensed motor vehicles stored on their properties. And making sure that they don't become a hazard to the community and to the people that live in that residence. Best way to meet this standard, make sure that it's in an awning or a carport to protect it from the elements or have it covered by a car cover. And at this point, I'm gonna let Brandon Roberts take over. Um, let me know if you have any questions. Thank you, Trude.
These slides, we, we put this together more for you to have information, because we kind of need your help with some of this to. Put the information out into your districts, so in your packet, you'll see the, every one of these slides for information purposes. Um, the amnesty period, we want to give people the opportunity to comply. We, we want to give people the opportunity to clean up. And so from now, roughly ninety days, which will end May thirty-first. We'll give that time for people to clean up without us coming to any kind of court proceedings, any kind of fines or anything. Um, but after then, when we're talking about the amnesty period. On June first is when, with the help of Lawrence City Police, Code Enforcement and Strict Sanitation. We will become, we will strictly, strictly enforce the three main environmental ordinances that we have on the books. Yeah, and this, as you should see there, the City of Lawrence Police, Code Enforcement, Sanitation, uh, strictly enforce environmental ordinances to ensure clean and safe communities throughout the city. Um, also in your, your booklet, I mean, in your information, you'll find a list of the houses that. I have rode around to, to find that are either abandoned or, or dilapidated. And each one of you have the ones that is in your area. Now, this is probably not all of them. And not all of them need to be demolished. This is just a list that, that we found. Uh, Mayor, you have, yours is the master list, of course. Well, it has them all on it. And. What we, what we need from you is if you have any information that can help us on these, finding the owners, talking to the owners. That's what we would need from, from council members to help us. Give these, give the people, the owners, a chance to deal with this for themselves, if not, then of course the city will, will have to abate the condition. Um, the shaded, if you have any shaded area, uh, shaded addresses, that means I have got contact back from these, these owners. So any of those that you see shaded, they're working on. The rest of them I have not heard and I have not sent letters out to all of them yet. We're still working through that process. And there's a couple examples of what I would call just an abandoned structure versus a dangerous structure. Obviously, a dangerous structure is one that is showing evidence of falling in on itself. It was, someone had mentioned, some, a council member had mentioned. Cassandra had mentioned riding the trolley to see some of these. It's a great idea, um, touring the city like I do, there's a few places it would be kind of tough to get the trolley in and out of. Um, so what I would like to do, if it's okay with council, is to put this out there. We'd like to offer every council member. The opportunity to schedule a tour around your district with the zoning staff to review the properties on the demolition list. Or anything else that you'd like to talk to us about and we'll schedule that. Do you give Ms. Madison a call? Uh, the phone number's there or email address is there. Schedule it. Next couple of weeks, we'll set a, set a time, should take more than an hour or so. And we'll ride around and see what we can do for you and see what information you have for us. And I think that was it. Is there any questions about what, what we've presented to you so far from anyone? Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I, I will, uh, let you know, um, as you can see from. The approach taken, the, the desires that we have folks take care of their property and do what they need to do on their own. We're not trying to write tickets for the sake of writing tickets and we want to. Make this very public announcement by desire to, um, to clean things up, to encourage folks to take advantage of that three-month opportunity. So that, you know, folks just do what they need to do on their own and, and likewise, we. Hope that, uh. The cooperative approach that we're taking towards, um, trying to resolve issues with derelict houses is fruitful too. Already had some folks reach out to us and tell us, you know, they're interested in doing what they can, so. Um, next on. Yes, ma'am.
This is the same date that you had in mind, but said, why couldn't you clean up? I don't know what this is because of, this is something. Uh, this is something new to us and, um.
Yes, ma'am, we, we, uh, we sort of scheduled this as citywide cleanup and, and because we're having coordination with, um, the county, uh. It seemed like a good day to, uh, join efforts, so, um, we're happy to contribute to the cause. Um, on that note though, uh, the, the, the. Issues that Madison brought up, Ms. Workman brought up regarding surveys are terribly important. I'll hold that comment till, uh, my major report, just out of respect for Ms. Sullivan, um, who is next upon our agenda.
Just. Oh, City Council report. Okay, um. What I wanted to speak about, if it's okay, um, remarks from this. Creed.
Ms. Sullivan, can I caution you, caution everybody? I, I know that you wanted to speak and so I didn't know what you were gonna say before you say it. Um, but I do want to. Give a gentle word of caution. Uh, both to Ms. Sullivan, to every member of council, that the South Carolina Ethics Act. Um, forbids the disclosure of any confidential information. By a public official. Of information which they, that confident, if that confidential information was gained, portion of their duties. Which would include any discussions of matters taken up in executive session.
So, but this is. For her remarks that she's made for many of the executives. She's made it in public, right?
Right, i- i- as long as it has nothing to do with what we discuss in executive session.
Right, and it is also, um, concerning that she approached me about the. And it is also um concerning that she approached me about the procedure and how to go about uh purchasing that uh piece of property. And I asked her to um speak with you. And I did say that um she's been keeping it up for a while and I know that um it's possible for her to purchase it and that we should entertain uh her request. That that was my remark I want to state concerning this career. The next uh uh report was in District Two, we had been working on um some um federal housing uh grants. And um uh we were successful with getting some approved. I shared it with uh Counselor Campbell and Counselor Miller um that I was excited about their approval. Um and when I returned home, I didn't tell y'all that, but when I returned home, two of the applicants had been uh they had been contested. And so um I'm making a report of what we're doing, what's going on and that we're basically in the middle of an appeal for one personnel. Um and I didn't call the person's name, so we're just stating that we're battling a a ninety-dollar expenditure at this point. And so um that's what we're working on in District Two. Got two houses that's being repaired. Um I've been educating the community about um their homes and rebuilding uh equity into their homes, the structure of it and how to go about um um seeking assistance that is here, that's already been out allotted for them. Um and so that's what we're doing in District Two. And also I want to state also um going forward, if there's any plans or any um any thought concerning District Two that respectively, I hope that I will be contacted. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, appreciate that. And that takes me, us on our, my report, um let me follow on heels of Counselor Sullivan's remarks and her very kind gift uh of if I'm not mistaken, a peace little. I'm not much of a botanist, but I'm enough of one to recognize that. I suspect not. I suspect not. At a at a New Year's Eve event, um I was speaking to Counselor Miller and uh I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that you said that your hope for this year, as we were counting down the hours of twenty twenty-one being over, that your hope for the for twenty twenty-two is that we have unity. And uh I second those thoughts. Um and I appreciate your efforts to encourage that. A- as long as it is the um desire of every member of this council to get along with collegiality and work together and move uh for the best interest of the city, I I think we'll continue to operate as beautifully as we have. So um one of the things I think that we can count and have some pride in in Lawrence is we don't have raucous caucus or uh council meetings. We have spirited debate every once in a while. But Lawrence is a place that's moving in the right direction and we're doing that as a team. Um one of the things I appreciated about Mr. Eric's remarks uh about Lawrence Lights the Night is there's recognition that that was a thing the city could do through public program and a public event to support local businesses. It's just one of those little things that we can do to support our neighbors. Our efforts towards our community cleanup are another example of that. By I think wisely using funds um that the city has received in one-time money, we can make a really substantial dent in the number of houses which are dangerous and derelict and need to come down. We can reduce the number of safe havens for places, for people to uh to do drugs and to to cause blight in our communities. And I am more than excited to get started with that process. Going back to the the issue of surveys, the um that Ms. Workman was discussing, this is something we need your help with. Uh every member of City Council, I I would call upon to do your part to help get the word out. With regard to the broadband survey uh that we're doing in conjunction with CPW, the numbers that reflect how well Lawrence is served with broadband are provided by the broadband provider. Whether or not Spectrum is delivering good service according to government standards is determined by the numbers that Spectrum gives to the government. If that sounds a little fishy to you, it should. We're not saying that they're lying. I'm not picking a fight with Spectrum. But let's look at what the reality is. And the best way to look at the reality of the situation is for people to to do the surveys, log on to the speed test at their home, on their computer. Doesn't work really well on the phone, but on an actual computer, if they have one. And um record the numbers that it calls for in the survey and just report those back. If you do that, we can help report what actually is, not what our service provider say the situation is. If we do that, then maybe the nu- the the numbers aren't quite as accurate as as some might think and we'll we'll be able to show the the Oc- Office of Regulatory Staff, which is the office in the governor's office, which is helping administer the ARP funds at a state level and will help determine whether or not Lawrence um will be able to qualify that. But if we are able to get those funds, it is our goal and we've been working with CPW towards the objective of putting fiber on every street in the city of Lawrence. Um but we need your help. This is all hands-on deck situation, both council and the community, so spread the word. Um the second survey that that's really important is the survey about the thing that I just skipped in my mind. Community block grants, thank you. It's a very similar story. We have been told for years that we didn't qualify for CDBG grants because um our poverty level, by God's grace, was not high enough in Lawrence to justify um qualification for those funds. Neighboring communities like City of Clinton would be able to pull in hundreds of thousands of dollars every year. But because according to census numbers, we appeared to be just a fraction of a percentage off, uh City Lawrence didn't qualify. Well, there's more than one way to scan a cat on that. Um or some other hu- more humane euphemism. We can show that perhaps the the census numbers that the Upper Savannah Council of Governments uses to determine whether or not we qualify those grants are as accurate as they might be or might not be. If we fill out these surveys and we really need boots on the ground in the community to be able to uh get those surveys in the hands of community residents to give us information about the real conditions. So anything that any and all members of City Council can do, any members of the community can do to to help get those surveys in the hands of our citizens and back to us so that we can compile those results um will mean that we become eligible for sidewalks, fire trucks and all sorts of stuff that CDBG grants can be helpful with, but we need your help. Uh the last thing I want to uh give you a quick update on um is in the time since our last regularly scheduled monthly meeting, I won't say since our last meeting because we've been having one about twice a day. That's a joke to the press, you haven't been missing any unpublished meetings. S- in the time since our last meeting, we've been hard at work on implementation. Um today, we met with an architect who um will be helping us develop a plan to renovate our police department. One thing is for certain, though, um the facilities at our police department and our judicial court system are woefully inadequate. And um I appreciate the support of City Council in helping use some of our ARP funds, bring those facilities up to date. But that process is moving forward and um we'll be looking to hear back from them soon with an idea of their initial plans and recommendations. Ironically, we found out, we we noted, maybe it's a better word, is that the firm that is gonna be helping design the renovation is the same firm which helped actually build the structure in the sixties. So um that was a really long-winded way of saying lots of good things are happening. And it's a it's all hands-on-deck time, so um help earn your pay. City councilors and and let's get to work together. All right, uh the last report we have, um always a pleasure, we'd like to hear from Mr. Gary Bailey presenting the fiscal report from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one.
Evening. Good to see everyone. Uh I know it's always exciting when the auditor is here. You'll have that very thick, very thick audit report in front of you. I will not bore you and go page by page. I will give you a summary. And if Mayor, if you still would like, I'll give an update on the building, so we'll get through the audit and then it'll be a little more fun, I guess, on the end. We did get through your audit and and apologize, we were, we had it completed in December, but I had some scheduling issues in January, so uh just got just got here tonight. As you know, we come in and audit is fair fairly straightforward. We come in, we are basically issuing a report on the city's financial statements for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty-one. Basically, just letting you know that they're materially correct. So when you're looking through these numbers, you have confidence as a as a council, knowing that you can count on these numbers when you're making your decisions, when you're working on your budgets, uh any financial decisions that you're that you're making. So we come in and we we look at your processes, your controls, make sure you have uh proper sign-offs, those kind of things. And then we look through the uh the trial balance, take your trial balance and numbers, not to bore you too much, but you know, we sample things. We look at different expenditures and revenues coming in. We we confirm the balances on the balance sheet and just make sure that we can issue an opinion saying that these numbers are are materially reasonable. Reason we say materially reasonable is because we do not sample every single expenditure that goes out the city or every single deposit comes in. Would be too time-consuming and too expensive, um so no auditor does that. But we did issue an unmodified opinion, that's the opinion that the city wants with no findings. Uh basically means you had a clean audit. And I was just gonna quickly go over a few things, uh highlight a few things. GASB, which is the governmental county standard board, uh they have certain standards on how you per- prepare financial statements. And with governments, it it's it's like you have, if you're familiar with businesses, basically like two balance sheets and two income statements in your in your set of financial statements. So what I'm gonna focus on, if you wanted to look over, is at page thirteen. That's basically your fund financials. That this is what every year when you're budgeting and you're looking over at the budget in in April and May as you're getting ready to vote on new budget, these are the numbers that you're most familiar with. That's why I like to look at that one. You can see you have a general fund and you have the other governmental funds, which is mainly your your hospitality fund. For the year ending two thousand twenty-one, the city had just over seven million in annual revenue. That was up about ninety-two thousand. And that was equally split, about half of that was uh from hospitality and about half of that came from the from the general fund. Uh actually, your property taxes, property taxes and lost uh funds is actually down about two hundred thousand. Which if you looked at your balance sheet, you'll see the property tax receivable is actually up. So the thought is that will eventually come in one way or the other, so it's it's not like it's it's never coming back to the city. Uh sometimes it just depends on payment, uh how you how the payments came in. Uh so that was down, but then all a lot of the other revenue was up, like business license was up eighty-two thousand. The city had one point four two million. I would imagine with the purpose of the city, that'll continue to uh to increase. Uh state revenue, a little bit out of your control, is depending on state legislature, but that was up a hundred twenty-seven thousand. Uh another good one that was up is hospitality, uh was up fifty-five thousand. I would imagine that too will continue uh to increase in our city as we see more development. So that was your your basically your revenue numbers. And then your operating expenditures, uh and what I call operating would be just your normal everyday expenditures outside of capital outlay and debt service. So what it takes to actually operate the city before you invest in some some new capital projects. That was five point three million. So the city's annual uh expenditures last was five point three million, that was up two hundred seventy thousand. Just about all of that was salaries, benefits, healthcare costs. Uh those things are are rising. And of course, we're finishing this audit June thirtieth, twenty-one and and inflation's kind of hit us really hard in the last part of the year, so we all of us, individuals, business owners, municipalities, we're all seeing seeing those increased costs. So really, every other line item in your expense budget or your expenditures are pretty much one or two percent up or down within the previous year. Uh it's just the 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 labor cost continued to increase. You know, that's not just the salaries, but that's retirement costs, health insurance and so forth. Um on the capital outlay, we spent eight hundred fifty-four thousand in capital outlay. That was up a good bit, it was only two hundred fifty thousand in twenty. Half of that was a pumper truck, one hundred twenty-eight thousand for a pumper truck, a hundred fifty-four thousand for a freight liner, a hundred twenty thousand for street parking lot, uh paid. And then, of course, some of these things get paid for out of out of hospitality funds, not all that's coming out of the out of the general fund. The good news is, when you look at your revenue and you look at your operating expenses, the city cash flowed, which is very important, obviously, because when you cash flow, you can then put some money to either reserves, pay down debt, invest in capital outlay. Now, the operating expenditures, uh revenues and expenditures did cash flow, but overall, as a city, you dipped into some reserves because you invested in a a few larger items um in the capital outlay um well section. Uh but overall, um it was really a a I was thinking about this, Mayor, when we were at uh Gary's retirement. You were making some jokes about all the excess money that the the city had. Um but really, that reality is like, and and then you meant, I'm glad you mentioned the grants because most cities the size of Lawrence and smaller get enough funding to come in to operate. There's not a whole lot of excess, it just takes a lot, it's a lot of labor costs to to provide the services that the city needs. So when you can cash flow a little, it puts a little to reserve or pay down debt. But getting those grants are is really key because those grants can be used for some of these capital purchases and that really, really will will help the city. And I see that, we see that across uh the state where and a lot of the municipalities there, you know, a little bubble break even on the cash flow is those grants that really help um to push some of these capital. So that's a a really good thing to uh to continue to explore. If you want to flip back a couple of pages to page uh nine, that's just your balance sheet, that just just to give you a quick overview of the assets and liabilities of the city at the end of June. You can see this uh um unrestricted cash, your cash and cash repos. You can see this, uh, um, unrestricted cash, your cash and cash equivalents, that first line, the city was just under three million dollars in cash and cash equivalents. That was down a little bit from the previous year, again, because of the capital outlay. But based on operating expenditures at that level, the city's got about five and a half to six months of operating cash on hand. So, the governmental financials officer association, GFOA, they would suggest that you have at least two months of cash on hand. So, because of the way you collect property taxes, you get so much revenue that starts coming in October, November through February. I think you should have at least twenty-five or three months, so you're put, you're in a much better position at five and a half to six months of, of cash on hand. So, uh, that's a good, that's a good uh, metric to think about, when you think about how the city doing. One is, are you burning through cash in operations, you never wanna be burning through cash in operations, because that's just, that's a killer to the city. And then making sure you have some healthy cash reserves, which the city does. By no means is that a green light to go spend, because you're not that healthy, so, but you're, you're doing okay. Um, and then you'll see the property tax receivable, four seventy-five, that's the numbers up from the previous year. Like I said, the property tax collections was down two hundred thousand, that number's up, so hopefully that will correct itself in fiscal year uh, twenty-two. Other receivables are four hundred twenty-seven thousand, right after year end, you've got a, a municipal association, um. Payment of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, I believe it was, a hundred seventy-five thousand, that came in right after, in July of twenty-two, so right after year end. So that helps uh, cash flow, the city still has four hundred eighty-eight thousand at, at the end of June of restricted cash. Most of that is uh, hospitality funds, so it's restricted to hospitality purposes. And then just quickly down real quick, you'll see accounts payable and accounts li- uh, accrued liabilities, very small, those are just normal course of business. And when you compare that number to cash on hand, very healthy, basically you're saying you have, you know, almost three million of cash on hand. And roughly a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of short-term debt, so that's, you know, very healthy ratio there. And then the other one I'll point out to you, it's always a killer, that big number of net pension liability, six point uh, four eight three million. Nothing the city can do about that, as you all know, the, the state retirement uh, is underfunded and that's. That's audited in Columbia and every participant in the fund, including the city of Lawrence, has allocated a number. Yours is six point, unfortunately, that went up, it was about five, five point nine million in twenty, and it went up to six point five. The way the city and every participant pays, I think I mentioned this last year, is starting in eighteen. They were, they've been increasing the employer match, I think it was two percent eighteen, one percent nineteen, one percent twenty. They actually froze it in twenty-one, but then it's backed up one percent in twenty-two and one percent in twenty-three was the schedule that has seen. So that's about six percent increase over that six-year period. And what that means for the city is every time it goes up one percent, it costs the city about thirty thousand dollars more per year. So, by the, by twenty-three, when it's up six percent, that's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars more. It costs the city in just, just retirement expense than it did six years ago. So I mean, that's an ongoing expense that, that the city has to be prepared, everyone has to be prepared for, so. Uh, and of course, you wanna get that right, all the employees who are dependent on that retirement, that, uh, one day, so. Um, so that's what that six million is, um, like I said, overall, the city is, is really in, in good shape. Uh, you're spending within your, within your means, uh, the grants will certainly help, um, uh, you know. What I would suggest is, as always to every municipality, you can create a budget, you stick to it, you figure out a budget that works and cash flows for the city. You stick to it, if you see property tax collections are coming up short, you may have to go back and amend the budget to, to make sure your expenditures are still, still cash flowing. But overall, I would say the healthies in it, uh, the city's in a good, healthy place, um, you know, our, our firm. Always get turned around, our firm's just two blocks and within a month or so is gonna be from this window, you'll see it. Yes, so uh, with that, I'll answer any questions, if not, I, I was gonna share with you the update on the building.
Okay, okay, so our net position decreased to a hundred twenty thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so the balance is eight, six, forty-one, eight, one, six, forty-one, that is our, that is our ability, that's our asset position, position. In order to, that's the number that we could borrow again, right? That's not our bond?
No, that's not our bond.
That's not our eight percent, what's our eight percent?
Eight percent is based on revenue, that, 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 that comes into the uh.
The, the city has. Uh, Eric may be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe on the last conversation with Gary's, we have something in the neighborhood of one point two million in bond.
Yeah, you, you should be okay, and, and that number is really misleading to use because. GASB required you to put this pension in OPEB of almost six point eight million, that if you pulled that back out, that all drops down. Unrestricted net position, which is the negative number, that's, that number switches, so basically your net position goes up. Almost seven million prior to the GASB requiring that pension, so.
That's the one, that's the number that we are.
Um, don't quote me off the top of, off the top of my head about what, how that number is calculated. Right, yeah.
I can, if you like, I can, I can take, I can take your six thirty numbers. And calculate that and give that back to you, just so you, you'll have something, you can see as of June thirtieth, twenty-one, what your debt limits would be and, and provide it to you.
I would, I would like that.
Alright, make sure.
I like to look at that, especially when we're looking at some.
It's, it's, it's a good thing to look at, because you do have limitations on, on what, on how much you can borrow against uh, property taxes.
I, I do, this is just a sort of interesting fact, or at least I found it interesting, um, I went back and I looked at the uh, the numbers. From nineteen seventy-two, so fifty years ago. Um, at that time, the city's budget was one million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and four dollars. If you adjust that for inflation, it comes out to nine million, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-one. So, we're, we're doing more with nearly two million fewer dollars.
It's like your fire department, I mean, your police department, since hadn't chip up.
Yeah, well, we're working on it.
So, um, any, any other question on that? Alright, I, I printed out a, a, a couple of pictures, I was gonna pass it out, just to kind of give an idea.
Thank you.
Uh, what it looks like back down, we are roughly, uh. Three, about, about six weeks outside.
Wow.
So, you know, we, we bought this building in March of twenty twenty, so it's about, about a two-year project as of right now. With the hopes of moving in December twenty-one, which got pushed to February of twenty-one, which has gotten pushed to March of twenty-one. But as, what you can see there, that top picture, that's when we purchased the building, the previous owner, Mike, he had a different idea of what to do up there, so. That hole in the floor, he was gonna put a staircase there, so the picture below, um, we are sanding the floors. This, that, that top floor, the floor is getting sand, so all the windows and trim have been replaced in the, in the right corner or left corner. That's a staircase, or it was an emergency staircase that we added, so we have some rails to, to still put in. But if you flip to the back page, the biggest change is the other direction, so now we're standing on that big stage and we're looking towards the back of the property. You can see that stage there, um, we have taken that, so from the top picture to the middle picture, we took that stage out and cut an opening. So when you come up those stairs, you come straight through the middle there, and that's what those guys in the middle picture are doing, they're basically busting that wall out. And they're adding some, so that top floor now has a bridal suite with a private bath. Uh, storage, it has a catering kitchen, um, men's and women's bathrooms with multiple uh, stalls. And an elevator lobby, so it, you know, from the back of the building, it's a fourth floor, so it's a four-stop elevator, so. Um, so if you flip one more page, you can see what it looks like as of this morning, um, from that view, uh, so. It is at the point that we're working on sanding the floors, those doors are on order. Um, what we have determined is we probably can be ninety-nine percent done at the end of March. But we're waiting on this light fixture and this piece of furniture and, and the doors on the street level are like four months out. So, uh, some of those things, uh, we're still waiting on, and this bottom picture, that's actually the third floor elevator lobby. So that's actually the elevator, um, shaft, uh, so they're building the elevator, it's really odd, they, they start in the basement there, and they actually have the elevator built. And these guys are hanging from harnesses up and down the shaft, and they're welding the pieces as they take each level up on the elevators, it's uh, it's really interesting, yeah. And then that last one is just a, a little view of the second floor, the third floor is a little further along, but that second floor, that's where the love Bailey offices will be. All of the discoloration is all of the plaster repair, so we went in and had all the plaster repaired. Uh, so they're finishing up some trim, uh, probably within a week, they'll start uh, painting the second floor. Um, and then once the floor guys finish the third floor, they'll move down and start sanding the, uh, the second floor. So, we were able to, everything that we could save, we saved on that building. So these door, and this building is built nineteen oh seven, the, the doors, interior doors are, you know, over an inch thick, solid wood, so we just had those sanded down. We saved the plaster versus sheet, the only thing we, we did sheet rock on were the ceilings of the second floor, the plaster was just falling to the point that. We just had to tear them down and, and sheet rock that, but all the other, rest of the second, third floor, we were able to save all the plaster. We've put new windows throughout the building, um, where we could, there's a few on the first floor that, um, that we couldn't replace, they're historical. Um, we sprinkled the entire building, elevator, um, so really, we feel like we can use this building into the future for basically anything. I mean, it has the ability, we, our codes, we, we've done everything that we can, we can do anything we want in this building, so right now, the third floor is a dense space. Um, I originally kinda wanted to put apartments up there, but my wife said if we bought the building, she wanted to keep it as a dense space, she really liked it. Probably a good call, we already have uh, three confirmed wedding receptions in twenty-two up there, we, we haven't. In this condition, they're, they're taking, we've had a lot of additional calls for wedding receptions, Christmas events, uh, different annual parties for, for businesses. So, I'm hoping within a month, we're gonna see lights shining from the third floor that, of that building. Uh, the lights should be here, uh, we ordered them months ago, and they told us early February, so we're kinda any, anytime. Uh, now, we, we rewired the whole building, new plumbing, new HVAC, um, so. All that means is we've really went deep into our pockets for this whole thing, um, but it's, yeah, it's been, it's been a blessing, you know, uh. We are a C, Lawrence CPA firm, and we felt like our city was really going through a resurgence, and we wanted to be a part of that. We needed space and we, we really loved this big building, uh, more than we realized how much it was gonna cost to renovate it. But uh, but now we're, my la- my wife and I laugh and say, we're almost to the point they can't tell us we're over on anything else, because it's, it's done. Um, but the last thing that we're trying to do, we are, we are gonna do some curb appeal to the first floor, so if you're familiar. Edward Jones has that green awning, that'll be ripped off, they, they used to have a half window, the middle section has a half circle window. So, nice wooden double doors will be built there, Edward Jones, the metal doring will all be ripped out, the awning will be brought, taken off. The half window will be replaced, so Edward Jones entrance and our entrance will look the same, double wooden doors, the half circle. The artist coop is the only issue we're having, um, with the state, uh, trying to get approval, we've been denied about, huh, at least twenty times. Um, on what to do, so we finally came up and we said, we are gonna tear the whole front out and we're gonna replace it. Exactly like the picture that we found in nineteen oh seven, so it's gonna be glass and wood front, built exactly the same, I mean. Everything's some kind, you build exactly the same, tear the awning off, the only problem we were having is above the awning, it's just wood and there's an old, uh, artist coop sign. When you tear out, you have to replace every bit of it the way it was originally built. So, there's these transom prism windows, which you really need, I, I didn't know it is, you know, they're not clear. The sun's supposed to hit them and push the sun back into the building, because the building's long, they don't make those anymore. So, we just found a guy literally this week in Ohio tearing down a building, who was willing to sell us. He has enough, he's willing to sell them to us to, to put them, uh, in that, so. We gotta get a sample, show it to the state and get them to approve it, so we may be in the building, but we may still have a couple months of. Things to do to finish up the curb, so don't, if you see us in the building, don't think the curb of, on the, pill on the front is done, we, we, we're still here trying to get through that. It could be July before everything is finalized, so anyways, yeah. So sorry, that's a little long-winded.
Thank you.
Any, any questions?
I, I appreciate your faith and uh, investment in City Lawrence. And uh, I hope, but I think I can speak to council and say, we'll, we'll do our best, do our part.
I will say this, you mentioned the, the July third, uh, uh, last year. We've spent the last two summers in the top floor of that building watching fireworks, and it is lit, you was up there, a hundred and twenty degrees, it is hot, it was hot up there. So we told all the workers that's on, that's been helping us on this building and all of, so we're gonna have barbecue the July third this year. With air conditioner and bathrooms and lights up there, it's gonna be wonderful.
Can we still borrow a window?
Yes, we still borrow a window. Well, I'm heading to Mount Hill Baptist to talk to the minister, so, you know, have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alrighty, I have an agenda here somewhere. Okey-dokey, uh, that takes us to actual council business. Um, first item up on, uh, the agenda under council business is the consent agenda, which is approval of our agenda for tonight. Minutes from regular council meeting from January twenty-fifth, and as of the call meeting from February eighth. Do you hear motion concerning consent agenda?
I make a motion, we accept the consent agenda as printed.
We have a motion and a second, so any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, consent agenda is printed, please say, indicate saying aye. No, please say no. Alright, the agenda is approved. Um, moving on to old business, uh, we have second reading of ordinance two dash twenty-two dash oh one, which is a. Um, issuance and sale of uh, uh, public facilities revenue bond, um. As you're aware, council, we had a special called meeting for first reading of this uh, ordinance. Um, to more or less correct a uh. Clerical and accounting error. Um. On both our part and SunTrust part and, um. The amount of the repayment of one of the loans associated with that building. And this essentially uh, refinances that bond and. Allows that uh, discrepancy to be taken care of. Um, do I hear an ordinance, or excuse me, do I hear a motion uh, concerning that ordinance?
I make a motion, we accept a second reading ordinance two dash twenty-two dash oh one.
Thank you councillor and councillor, we have a motion and a second, so any discussion? Alright, hearing none, I call a question, all those in favor of passage of uh, ordinance two dash twenty-two oh one on second reading, please indicate saying aye. Any votes no, without objection, measure passes. The only item new business we have tonight is a first reading of an ordinance, um. To be presented by councillor Sullivan, um, regarding public housing, or excuse me, housing financial assistance. Councillor Sullivan?
Yes, sir, um. Here I am again, uh, headfirst diving in, um, we have recently passed. Uh. Two developments in the city of Lawrence and. Just researching and finding out about some of our local sisters and brothers of. Just researching and finding out about some of our local sisters and brothers of Greenville, Spartanburg, Greenwood County. Just um, looking into some of the initiatives that they utilize for the issue of uh. Upfront costing and down payment assistance, um, utilizing a, a. Financial uh, institution called Community Works. Where they um, help support. I guess the best word would say, um, personnels that are seeking um, to purchase homes. But the issues are the upfront costs. So this ordinance is is speaking about or asking for the city to develop such a program. Or where it specifically asks that we uh, partner with Community Works. Um, in support of some of the people that are here, that will be in interested in purchasing. Some of the affordable housing. However, um. What I would like to do is, um, after we go through the motion to speak about it. Table this ordinance, because I would like uh, to speak with uh, Attorney Thompson some more. Because there's more things that I wish I could have included, such as uh, the large issue of. Uh, certified nursing assistance, that we have in the city of Lawrence, uh, N H C, Martha Franks. And then we have, it used to be called a GAFA assisted living. And um, I've been blessed to meet some of those ladies and males. Um, that worked in the healthcare world and a lot, a large majority of them are rent. And and uh, they do pay uh, for uh, pay their rent on time, from my understanding of this. From um, the conversations I've had with them, the same payments that they're making for rent. They could be work, making them um, for ownership. And but the, the issue is um. Coming up with the, I think it's twenty percent down for most of them. And then the city of Lawrence, well, Lawrence County. Now, just speaking from where I grew up, I grew up in most of the areas that are, are called minority areas. And and the majority of people that I um, um, lived amongst. We had three main focuses, um, and it was food, water and shelter. Financial literacy was something that we um, did not go after. I learned about it and still learning as an adult. And so those are some of the things that um, this ordinance speaks about. It speaks about um, a requirement of um, a HUD based. Um, housing program that that kind of take you through the steps of purchasing a home. And uh, this to me seems that it's a large need. And it will help keep some of the people that's here instead of migrating them off. Um, but I'm asking that it be tabled, because I want to add more things and I do want to uh, entertain some. Support from other council members if they care to do so. As I stated earlier, I'd be focused and diving in headfirst and uh, I'm still learning. So I would like to table that and I'm hoping that some other council members would like to add to this ordinance. Because there may be some things that you've learned concerning your districts that is a need and a require. You would want to state as a requirement for such funding to be set aside for personnel in the city of Lawrence. That's all I have.
Thank you, counselor, um, we have a motion to table the ordinance for council, is there a second? We have motion and a second, uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of tabling ordinance two dash twenty two dash oh two, please indicate saying aye? Any opposed, no? And motion's tabled. That brings us uh, to the end of our agenda for tonight. For those that of you that are still here, you've made it, congratulations. Appreciate your perseverance. Alrighty, uh, at this point though, I will turn my eye to the mayor pretend and ask politely. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to, uh, of adjournment, please say aye? Any opposed, no? We are adjourned.